Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Council. I call to order the Hasslet City Council this Monday, April 7, 2025. At 7:01 PM, there is a quorum present. If you would bow your heads, I'll offer an invocation and then stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Holy Father. We thank you for all your many blessings and your guidance. We just praise your name and we give you all the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
System participation and comments. Do we have anyone wish to address the council? Do we have anybody online?
No, sir.
Very good. Let's go to items of community interest. First, I want to acknowledge the Boy Scout Troop 2020 of Hasslet. Thank you all for being here. They are here. They, this is towards a merit badge of citizenship and community. And just to brief you, Scouts, you know, what's the purpose of these city council meetings? These meetings, twice a month, or more if we need it, called a special meeting, but nonetheless, these are our business meetings. Twice a month, every other week, we, we come together to discuss and act on or make decisions on business confronted the city, and that's what this is all about. With that, is anybody here would like to say a word about scouts, troop leader, anything like that? Other than that, okay, then we'll move on, but welcome and we're happy you're here. For a City of Hasslet general election be held Monday, or excuse me, Saturday, May 3, 2025, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM to elect the mayor, council member place two, council member place four. Early voting for the May 3 general election starts Tuesday, April 22 through Tuesday, April 29. City Hall will be closed on Good Friday, which is April the 18th, Memorial Day, May the 26th. This Saturday, April 12, we have our annual Easter egg hunt. It's always a good time, so come up and participate if you want to find, well, get lots of candy, I know that. But again, that's April 12 at 4:00 PM. Keller Hassett Road Extension, road opening and ribbon cutting ceremony will be held Friday, May 2 at 10:00 AM. Brush and Limb drop off day will be Saturday, May 10 from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM on, at 791 Schoolhouse Road. That is the public works facility for y'all, for you folks to know where that is. And Memorial Day celebration will be held Monday, May 26 at 10:00 AM at the Veterans' Memorial Garden in the community park. Updates and on activities, projects, and event recaps. Keller Hassett Road Extension. Mr. Rogers.
Mayor and Council, all of our base courses of asphalt will be completed this week. Surface asphalt goes down next week, so we're on schedule for that May 2 opening, so really excited about that. So that's what's going on on there. Everything else is doing good.
We have Capitol Projects, a, those requested for last meeting, but it wasn't ready for them, but we do have this, these are the Capitol Projects listed in your Capitol Projects in the, in the annual budget. Is there any questions on any of this? All right, it's just statuses, that's, this is where we are. All right, well, very good. Consent agenda, 6A, approval of the March 17, 2025 regular city council meeting minutes and approval of the March 17, 2025 Board of Adjustment Meeting Minutes. All right, Council?
I found a, an error and I apologize for not emailing prior, but I'll, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 317 council minutes, but there is a mistake in the BOA minutes. So I don't know if I can make the motion with the...
In the Board of Adjustment?
Yes, sir.
Just make a...
I meant to email it and I forgot, I apologize.
Do you have what that error is?
Yes, in the minutes, item one, if you'll pull it up. I voted nay and Doug has not listed, Councilmember Horak, as voting aye right there, the, no. So it was the, the other first item, item one, it says motion deny variance request and had ayes and there was yourself, Carrie, Hector, myself, and Doug. Oops. And I did not, I voted against that. Okay, but Doug is there, so that's good.
It's on the second minutes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yeah.
What are you paging through here?
You're paging through the agenda and she's talking about the Board of Adjustment agenda.
Yes.
So Board of Adjustments is item, what, what is the number and...
On the minutes, it was item two, discuss, consider and act on a variance request to construct a 3200 square foot storage shed, that one. The, the voting report is incorrect.
And what should it be? Was someone excluded?
One, two, three. I voted nay and I went back and checked the YouTube to make sure I wasn't incorrect and I thought someone was missing, but maybe not. Cause yourself, Carrie, Hector, and Doug voted yes. So it should just be 4-1 is the correction.
Shows 5-0, I do think it was a 4-1 on what he's showing right there, Mayor.
So you're saying that you voted nay and the other three, remaining three voted aye?
Yes, sir.
All right, and we can make that distinction with that correction?
With that correction, I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented, or with the correction.
All right. Motion is made to approve the consent agenda with the correction noted for the March 17, 2025 Board of Adjustment Meeting Minutes, item two, and that Tanya Morrow, board member Tanya Morrow, voted nay. Is there a second?
Mayor Halsey, I'll second that.
There is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Spreu, thank you.
Aye.
Now, please note that Councilman Hector Nahira is present. And did you vote in favor of that? Did you hear that motion and second?
Yes, I, I voted yes.
I'm gonna pause here and tell the scouts what just, what just happened. Every meeting, we record what happened, who, what the topic was, and how each member voted. And we just came through and the members here review the minutes and Councilwoman Morrow found, okay, well, that one item, no, I didn't vote yes, I voted no. And that was just a, that's a correction and we noted it and it's approved on that. So that's approving our meeting minutes from previous meetings. This next group, several items, we're going into, this is where the council will vote on certain items, just as we just did here, but these are items listed with regard to agreements or ordinances, et cetera. 7A, discuss, consider and act on the approval of joint election agreement and contract for the May 3, 2025 election services. Ms. Lamb. Well, this is our annual, this is our contract with Tarrant County for them to perform the election services. In short, that is the sum of it. So it's to you, Council?
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the joint election agreement and contract for the May 3, 2025 election services as presented.
Motion is made to approve the joint election agreement and contract for the May 3, 2025 election services. Is there a second?
Yes, Mayor, I'll second that.
There is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Is you in that?
Aye.
Okay, very good. 5-0, thank you, Council. I want to give the scouts, okay, a motion was made. On any of these items, if the council, if no one makes a motion to approve, then it dies right there. If someone does not second, so a motion was made to approve, Councilwoman Ricketts approved, made the motion, I repeated the motion, and Councilman Doug Horak, he seconded it. If it's not seconded, it dies. So just to explain to you what happened, and then we called for the vote and all members voted in favor of it. 7B, discuss, consider and act on an ordinance amending Chapter 12, traffic and vehicle to add a permit for temporary street closures. Mr. Rogers?
Yes, Mayor and Council, staff found out and identified that we didn't have a permit for other individuals. We have this in Chapter 13 for all of our construction activity work, but didn't have one for anyone else that ever wanted to close a road, so any business or anything. So we went back, wrote up this, been back and forth to Jeremy a few times, getting all the legal stuff done, the right place in the ordinance to put this, and it gives us a new temporary permit so that a person will come in, can apply, but it will go to the fire department. Our share of public works to go through, make sure is this going to interfere with anything and being sure that we keep any kind of emergency routes open during the process. So that's what this is all about. We got all kinds of new permits and paperwork, but that's what the gist of it is, is the main thing this is for.
So you said persons and this is really point, but also businesses or industry in itself, most common, brought it, really brought to our attention is Amazon. In the afternoons, when they release their workforce or have their employee change, that they need, they do cone part of that Westport Parkway. And there was an incident that brought it to our attention and that was the consequence of this. They are able to file for a permit and that way the city is notified in any alterations and that takes into account the fire department and policing, they're all aware through that permitting process that this will occur. That's what this is for. All right, Council, any just...
Mayor Halsey, what is the cost for the permit once applied for?
These, these are simple permits, these things are 25 to 50 depending on what they're doing. And that will be coming again when we do our upgrade to our fee schedule.
Are you guys taking into calculation what it costs for the public works and such to do all that?
We did have a deal, there will be a sentence in all of these that says, you know, if we have to go out, any outside people, any things, any additional costs that there will be, but we will give them that when they come in and apply, we'll figure out what it is, send that back to them.
But that answer is yes, we take into account, and that's the point, that is the basis of any permit or fee is what is, excuse me, is any fee what the, either consultant or staff time involved is for.
Perfect, so the financial burden will be put onto the applicant?
Correct.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you.
Some of these could be, especially traffic engineer wise, might need a traffic engineer to look at, so we would be contacting somebody outside of our organization to do that.
But the applicant would pay for that?
They will know that beforehand when they file for their application, we figure that all out, send it back to them, here's the fees and what the fees are for.
And an individual could also apply, not just restricted?
Correct.
If you wanted a street party?
If it were in a subdivision, anything of that nature.
Yeah, that's why we're keeping the base permit kind of low, because it could be just a neighborhood block party.
Is the base permit, is it time based or is it occurrence based?
Occurrence based.
So in the case of Amazon, they have to apply for it for every afternoon?
They would apply probably for a long-term permit, which will cost them more because it will take more to figure out what all their needs are going to be and the fact of there's going to probably be periodic inspection.
Yep, one question I had reading down through this, not so much worried on the aspect of, you know, the Amazon example, but if it's in a residential neighborhood, do we have anything in here for notification of residents that affected?
Yes, we have, the other property owners within this, they'll have to be notified.
Okay, that was, that's my main concern and there's, I read down through there, I didn't see it, but there is notification there that go out to anybody affected?
Yes.
Very good. Any other discussion?
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I'd like to approve the ordinance amending Chapter 12, traffic and vehicle to add a permit for temporary street closures.
Motion is made to approve the ordinance amending Chapter 12, traffic and vehicle to add a permit for temporary street closures. Is there a second?
Mayor Halsey, I'll second that.
There is a second. Any further discussion? There is none, a call for the vote, all in favor? Motion passes?
Aye.
5-0, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Item 7C, discuss, consider and act on joining the Metroport Chamber. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow?
Yes, thank you. I had asked for this item to be placed on the agenda and I didn't create or make a former, formal presentation, but I just wanted to mention that it's been on my mind the last couple of meetings after going over the economic development reports. I was also contacted by Kitty Wertz, the Type B President, about citizen business input. And then our last meeting specifically, looking at I-35 and Hasslet Parkway possibilities for business, I thought it might be something we talk about and discuss, possibly rejoining the Metroport Chamber of Commerce. We joined in 2000, let me go check.
In 2003.
In 2003 and exited right before the 20-year anniversary. So just, just a couple of things that I had written down about being a part of a chamber gives us networking opportunities as a community, increased visibility, advocacy, representation, some of the, the, the cost maybe of infrastructure can be placed on the businesses coming in and I think it's good for controlled growth. I, I read this and I, I'm gonna steal it, this is not my quote, but I think of, of growth as if you don't manage it, it will manage you. So I think that the partnership with the Metroport Chamber is something we could look at as a board and see if it's something we might want to consider rejoining or we might not think it's the right time, so.
Very good and those are fair impressions. We did belong to the chamber and in fact, it was I that joined as the councils have joined the chamber in 2003. And in 2022, reviewing all the memberships that we've, we had across the board, I looked at this and in fact, I had called the chamber president and while we were still a member and said that our, and one of the things still present, but it's improved a little, not a whole lot, but some, is that the industrial traffic on 156, which is our only north-south corridor, it's our main street, it's the only one we have, had, it was so busy is that it has killed our internal commerce, internal commerce within the city. And most distinct is that people get home, it's a busy drive, congested drive, and they go to heck with it, I'm not getting back out on 156 and go get a glass of wine or visit. But that is a very popular response I get from folks. Nonetheless, I spoke with the president and expressed those concerns and I go, what can you do to help with, you know, and bottom line, would you join with me in writing a letter to text dot stating that this is the, a situation with, we have that is really curtailed our internal commerce in the City of Hasslet? And the answer I got was no. And I didn't see any, when I look at the organizations we belong to, like anything else, whether it be a contract for services or anything of that nature, what is our return? What are we getting in return? And this is not a inexpensive proposition. Then in 2022, I think October of '22, I'll send an invoice of $11,800, that's an annual due. And now it's over $12,000 a year and it could be more. But I look at it very distinctly what that, what, what does the city itself get out of it? I would like to make a comment with regard to a Chamber of Commerce. What is a Chamber of Commerce? It's an organization comprising fundamentally, it's an organization comprising of local businesses that support the interest of their members. With regard to, may mention, you know, how belonging to a chamber could be controlled growth, chambers have absolutely nothing to do with that. That is all the discovering body, the planning and zoning, the governing body that in accordance with state statute has that controlled growth. The opportunities that exist along I-35 and/or Hasslet Parkway, and we've addressed this in the last many months, the realization is retail is not coming on I-35. It's not happening. It hasn't happened. We got a car dealership coming out that wasn't because we belonged or didn't belong to a chamber, but is that the primary impetus of the delay or non-retail locating is the competition that they have right across the highway is Alliance Town Center, just south is Presidio and here comes North City in the triangle of created between I-35, 287, and 820. So I, I understand it's a fair impression, but the, the fundamental aspect of a Chamber of Commerce is for business owners.
Yes, I, I agree 100%. Business support for our local businesses, our small businesses, access to resources and education for them, so it might help some of the businesses that come into Hasslet be successful and not have such a turnover or, or come in to begin with.
Mayor Halsey, since a lot of this is before my time on the council, do we know any kind of data for like an economic ROI for what the investment into these Chamber of Commerce's can generate towards the city? Because I think what Councilwoman Morrow is kind of maybe potentially hitting at is the exposure that you generate from these Commerce's, you know, chambers where they have access to businesses that might draw the interest for revenue, because I'm also curious that since we withdrew from them in 2023, you know, that was before any of these massive subdivisions that are now going on in Hasslet were ongoing and, you know, in this case, Caraway was not completely finished, Sweet Grasps wasn't there, you know, North Glen was only on Phase 1 and some other ones, so it was really a small relative consumer base at that point, whereas now there's probably 3, 4, 5X population wise what we necessarily had back then. So if we could make the interest of a corporation to bring some kind of economic development here, because we're lacking on so many different things, you're right, because they do go down to Alliance, but it's a pain to go to Alliance, especially with traffic and it with this many people that live in Hasslet, it would be a lot easier to, to locate something here if we could draw that or attract it to the city. So I, I mean, if we can find out what the ROI is for the investment into the Chamber of Commerce, I don't see why it wouldn't be at least worth the time and effort of looking down what we can come from this.
Well, you say ROI, you're talking with increased sales tax? I can tell you that at $12,000 a year, you have to generate $12 million a year in sales every year. Now, is that what you were saying in 70, in 2023, we were well on our way in development, all subdivisions had been approved, all 2005 additional residential lots had been approved. Just by mere fact of where we're located, between Alliance Airport, Perot Field, being the only industrial airport in the United States and Burlington Northern Santa Fe being one of the busiest hubs in the United States, and the synergy they create for industry itself is a unique setup in the United States. It is very unique and plus all the world-class research companies that enter in around that Alliance area. And here we are down in the middle of it and surrounded by the 11th largest city in the United States or, or, it, it puts us in a unique spot, you know, one of the, you know, in development of a city, when we experience population growth or a city experiences population growth, is a windfall and the windfall is retail sales. But we haven't had that pleasure and... But we haven't had that pleasure, and in over, I'll say the twenty or nineteen years that we were a member, that being a member didn't influence any of that.
Mr. Mayor, in a contrast aspect to your example of the sales tax, in retrospect, what would one new business in Hasslet generate for the city?
Depends on what the business is.
Say an average restaurant that would generate maybe, on a low end, would be a million a year of, of a total revenue to the business, which whatever our sales tax percentage of that would be?
Well, if that's their total revenue, then it would be.
Because that equals a hundred thousand a month, and sales twenty-five thousand a week for a business.
I don't know, I'm not even on a venture to guess what the revenue is on a restaurant.
No, no, I'm telling you, I, I deal with restaurants, an average base would be that for one, if we were able to land a new restaurant here. I know for an average, an average Whataburger does about eighty thousand a week in revenue, if that gives you an idea.
Well, that'd be the revenue, but that'd be in their expenses, but that's their total, that, that's sales that would be taxable?
Yeah, that's, that's the, the general gross revenue, which is taxable a hundred percent, because that's off the top. So that's what I'm saying, if we could bring, generate businesses, you're looking at it from a sales perspective, generating businesses in the city would help.
Any, uh, um, I'm looking at the pure advantage of spending twelve thousand dollars a year of joining an organization that doesn't particularly, hadn't particularly brought any direct benefit to the city. So there's lots of aspects to, to consider, and it is a fair assumption, well, join the Chamber of Commerce. Well, we were for nineteen years. And nonetheless, it's a good discussion to be considered. Do you have any proposal there?
I guess the only other thing, I wanted to add, the other cities that are a part of Metroport are Argyle, Justin, Northlake, Roanoke Trophy Club, and Westlake. And I think it would have to be a process that we would maybe look at putting it on the budget in October and then discuss it and see where the, I don't know if the monies come out of general fund, or they come to Port B.
It'd be general fund money.
Okay, so we'd have to look and see, like I said, where the monies would be taken out of, and I just wanted to be a discussion, something that we, so I guess, since it's a discussion, it's an action item.
And I'll, and just to, over the years, we've had businesses join and drop. Today, we have a total of three businesses that are part of the Metroport Chamber of Commerce.
That are in, that are in the city of Hasslet, three businesses?
That are in the city limits of Hasslet.
So they've been dropped for two years, and they see the benefit to remain with that chamber?
Say it again?
Might be, I said, we've dropped it as a city for the last two years, and if there's three businesses still within our city limits that see a benefit to remaining with that chamber, it might be more of a upside to it than we're realizing.
Well, I think it's something that each, each of you as council members should consider, think about, investigate on your own. Again, a Chamber of Commerce is for the benefit of business to business. They have unique opportunities, they have networking for them that they can do. But I'll say that over the years, over thirteen, nineteen years, that being a member and, and did not bring or cause a business to locate to Hasslet, Texas. Now, Mr. Schwanki and I regularly talk with businesses that are looking to relocate to Hasslet, Texas, but they are, and there are several that are in the works.
Mayor Holsy, that sort of leads to a question that I wanted maybe to even ask Mr. Schwanki, because he does deal with other cities besides here, the city of Hasslet. Based upon that, have you, have you ever had the Chamber of Commerce help you or work with you on relocating with economic development?
The only, the only time where I've had Chamber of Commerce's help is when they've been specific city chambers of Commerce, is not a regional chambers of Commerce. And they, you know, a Chamber of Commerce can promote a city, but in this case, they're promoting a bunch of cities. And so it really dilutes what they can do for you.
Mayor Holsy?
Yes.
I have a question for Councilmember Morrow. I don't know if she spoke to somebody at the chamber, but maybe they can provide some kind of data or information, or what they can offer to the city, you know, what, what we're going to get for that twelve thousand dollars, or eleven thousand, or whatever it is. Because I, I'm the same way, it's, it sounds like the Chamber of Commerce is for business-to-business interaction and not so much for cities, you know, if they don't, so if we are going to join, it would be good for them to send some kind of, you know, presentation of what they have to offer for, for that amount of money.
Well, Councilmember Morrow does have a, what they offer to the city, and we can, and I've got a copy of that. We can send that out to each councilperson for your review, what they do offer.
And Ms. Aldrich did say she would be more than welcome to come and speak to council if that was, if this was just like step one, to see if there's even an interest of something to rejoin. It sounds like it is, so she, she, I can put, I mean, Mayor Holsy has her contact, so we could set something up for her to come present, if that's, is that what you're asking, Councilmember Nahara?
I mean, she's welcome to come if she likes, but it's just something in writing that, you know, kind of, okay, what are these other cities getting from, from being a member?
Is this, this sheet? Here's what we get in return for twelve thousand dollars?
If she comes in person, we can ask her questions and get responses back immediately versus a paper. It only gives us what the information on it is, you know.
She gave me the entire thing, I don't know if you can see that?
Having her come before us and give us all the information in person, I think is the best option for the council.
The key that I'd know how to get lost on everything too, is we're all, we're all talking about twelve thousand dollars a year. Let's not get lost, that, you know, we're talking twelve thousand dollars a year, and that's going to increase every single year. If you go off of what Mayor Holsy said, and we went off of twenty years, that's a quarter million dollars from the city after over twenty years, that what type of, you know, if you're asking about return, that would be a lot more revenue than what we're even thinking about right now. So don't get lost on just the twelve thousand dollars per year. You have to look at the entire picture here.
Well, it sounds like an item will continue, right?
I'll make a motion to continue the Discuss Consideration Act on joining the Metroport Chamber.
There's a motion to continue this discussion item on Metroport Chambers. There's a second.
Yes, Mayor, I'll second that.
There is a second. All in favor?
Uh, moment, Mayor Holsy, before we do that, can we put a time limit on when we're going to re-circle back with the discussion on this?
I think it'd be appropriate to
If we're going to get the lady to come give us information and such?
Just suggestions, email this out, give count, each council member to do digest on their own what this is, and either call members that belong, or businesses that belong, and/or call the chamber itself, and then we meet. So I'll say, I, I'm going to propose a month from now, the next May meeting, or, or the, yeah.
So that would be the May, I can amend my, um, May fifth?
So a month from now? Does that sound like a plan?
Yes, and what were the three businesses that you said were apart?
I didn't say which.
Oh, can you tell me which they are?
I have, uh, one is Fast Signs, and then we have a pediatric, or we have, I think it's Cook's Children here in Hasslet.
The one just across from the, the park?
And then we have one, I don't have them written down here. There is another, but I'll email that to all the council, those members.
Thank you, yes, I'll send this out. I have it digitally, so.
There are, uh, businesses that say that reference Hasslet, but they're either in Keller or Fort Worth. So we're talking about Hasslet address businesses. All right, very good. So, uh, there was a motion and second, so the, um, are we amending the motion for have that meeting next item, uh, for this discussion, May fifth? May fifth. Do you amend, uh, who made the motion?
I made the motion, I amend that.
You amended that to May fifth?
Yes, sir.
Second? You agree?
Yes, I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, so I'll take a moment to comment to the scouts. That was a discussion on, as an item that we've never discussed before as a group, and it's, it's called the Open Meeting Act, that all business in front, you know, that the city acts on, that discussion happens in front of public. So you are, as the public, are aware of what we're doing, and the discussion, you hear the discussion, you see the materials that we have, and you'll see a result. In this case, we didn't vote on to do it or not, but we voted on, okay, we're going to talk about this again next month. And it just makes a public record. Very good. Uh, executive session, have no items for executive session. So future agenda of items, we have the Knox Key and a local agreement with the city of Fort Worth. We have many others, but this one is queued up to come before you very soon, next meeting, I believe. And any other items? If I could have a motion to adjourn?
Mayor Holsy, I'll move to adjourn.
Motion's made to adjourn. Is there a second?
Mayor Holsy, I'll second.
All in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you, council, scouts. So that was a city council meeting. That was our business meeting, one of two every month. If y'all I adjourn this meeting at seven forty-three PM. And everything we did here will be on the minute meeting, uh, meeting minutes for us to approve at our next meeting.